And I wish to welcome CHCO for being here tonight. Florence Mitchell is in the back doing the switching. And of course, there's their star, Vicki Hogarth, right down back. And then we have a new person tonight doing the camera, Lucas Kohler. Welcome, Lucas. Lucas is from St. Andrews, so thank you for coming all the way from St. Andrews to do the camera. We appreciate your work. Tonight, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda. Councillor Dederaacus, is that? Yeah, seconded would be, okay, Councillor McCrory. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. That brings us to three conflict of interest disclosure. Anybody who wishes to declare that can do so now. If not, we move on to four adoption of minutes of the previous council meetings. And 4A is June 21st, 2023, a regular council meeting. I'll look for a motion to approve those minutes. Councillor Ted, seconded by Councillor McCrory. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. 4B, which is June 28th, was a closed-door meeting. I'll look for a motion for approval of that. Councillor McKay, and seconded by Councillor McCrory. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. July the 11th, closed-door meeting. I'll look for a motion to accept that. Councillor McCrory, seconded by Councillor Lee. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Business arising, there is none tonight. Delegations, there are none tonight. That brings us to department reports, and I'll go to CAO Jason, get it.
Thank you, Your Worship. Staff meeting with Vern Faulkner on dangerous unsightly properties happened in the last month. Ten new files were opened, as well as three existing files that were handed over from the previous dangerous unsightly bylaws. Personnel, we've completed interviews with Black's Harbor Public Works position and the arena rec foreman. Fire Chief Johnson has started his first week, the first week of July, and settling in and adopting some standardizations and working on some forms. Completed application for municipal capital borrowing board that was approved last month's council. Also reviewing review of the borrowing and debt. We had about 1.8 in St. George and about $450,000 in Black's Harbor. So any pending that was outstanding debt was canceled off as there's not a need for it. Housing and development, working on three potential residential developers in St. George, and that's with Brunswick Street and Hillside. We're still waiting for both of those developments to get to a development agreement, as well as two developments in Black's Harbor. Drafting two of those development agreements for the projects. Transportation, lining was completed in the roads and crosswalks in St. George and Black's Harbor, and working on additional no-parking zone painting in St. George here, and some additional lining going to Black's Harbor. Part of the equipment purchase, we purchased a lining machine that was, that's going to be used for both throughout the municipality now. So it was a good purchase. Transportation, received quotes for a number of local municipal areas and roads for paving and, excuse me, installed private lane signs and reviewed civic numbers, road, street registrations. It's a few roads that we are still coming to see that have not ever been registered with 911. Also working on the community name signs for the former Black's Harbor and St. George. So these would be community name signs, signs that are just as you come into those communities. The four municipalities don't have those signs, so, and as well as some other signs that are in the rural areas that we need to update as well. Finishing on the install of streetlights in Back Bay, I think there's just two, one or two that are left, and Exit 52 here in St. George. Tenders, fire truck, air packs, or sorry, fire truck. The fire department, air packs and paving to be released over the next few weeks. Parks and Rec, we've still ongoing with a lot of upgrades that are going on at the arena, waiting for the arrival of the gym floor, the webcam, the new PLC for the ice room. Work is ongoing in the storage area under the stands, an office area in the recreation former curling club area. Also upgrades to the water treatment for the cooling tower for the ice plant as part of the new provincial Legionnaires Disease Regulations. Provincial regulated blue-green LG advisory signs have been posted around the public access points on the McAdavick River in Lake Otopia, including signage from the Pasmacwadi Nation in Pasmacwadi language. Request for interested, request for interest from neighboring committees regarding regional policing options has been sent, and meetings were attended. I think Mayor may be discussing that later on. Meetings were attended. We're also working on contacts with a few other policing agencies for potential policing options regionally. Fire renovation work has been started at the second hall, Fire Hall, Second Falls Fire Hall, and the Back Bay Fire Hall. Utilities, ongoing work with respect to the water and wastewater IBA projects for St. George and Black's Harbor, engineering updates and project reports. Test wells in St. George are expected to be completed this month, and still reviewing preliminary areas for the Black's Harbor network. Couple of items were, couple items to improve on, scheduling of the Canadian flags on Main Street, we missed that, and we'll do a better job of that next year. We missed it, missed the holiday. And better access to the washrooms at Canal. We have replaced the locks at the Canal Beach. The original locks just did not work. The people would go in, lock the lock and come out, and the washrooms would remain locked. So we have replaced those for better access. And we're going to do some further work at the St. George baseball field for drainage and leveling. And residents are asked to report any needles or sharp objects in public areas to the municipal office, and any type of, any items they find in walking trails, just to give us a call. Easy phone number, 755-4321, and you can let us know, and we'll send someone to pick them up. And that's general government.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions or comments on that report? Councillor Dederaacus.
For the dangerous unsightly properties, the 10 open files, how many of those are from recent complaints?
Um, I would say at least probably half of them are, yeah.
And to be a part of that file, do you have to receive a complaint? Or is it something that you see, or Vern sees and says, this is something that we need to look at?
Right. Yeah, there are known files, ones that have been opened that we know through Department of Environment, you know, unregistered salvage yards that have been dealt with previous by the province. So that's where the other half would come from. And certainly, there's other ones where we've not maybe received any complaints, but there are homes that had caught fire multiple years ago, and there's been no repairs to them. So, you know, burnt-out shells of homes that are public safety concern.
And last question, sorry. If, because we talked about running water is a big issue, right? Like if the water's not being run in the home, it's probably like a vacant home, right? What if in a situation where someone is collecting rainwater? Is that, would that?
If the home is occupied?
Yeah.
Yeah, so under dangerous unsightly, I mean, one of the main points of that is that it becomes dangerous to the public by means of being vacant. So if it's occupied, it wouldn't qualify for that. There are certain parameters in that bylaw that will say that if it's occupied, but an occupied dwelling is, it's a total different set of guidelines. And that's really not something we've been looking at. I mean, we have, with the complaints that we've received, yes, there's a few that are certainly occupied, debris that's in the yard. But any of the ones that have been added to that list, not by complaints, have been totally vacant, sort of almost abandoned dwellings.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Councillor Lee, you're next.
Just wondering, Jason, if the water lines, when are we going to start working on them on Brunswick Street and Riverview Avenue? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, the Riverview Avenue one would be with the capital borrowing, so that would be in September. We'll hit that.
Okay.
The Brunswick Street, the one in front of the school, that should be part of just the paving that we're going to do.
You see some equipment out on the other side of, the west side of town. Is that for us?
Yeah, no, no.
Oh, okay. All right, thanks.
Any other questions, comments, and we'll move on to the building and planning report, and Jason will give this one as well tonight.
Thank you, Your Worship. Alex Henderson was unable to attend, and last minute unable to find any staff to get down here. So this is the planning and building report from the Service Commission. Service Commission planners are assisting Eastern Charlotte with preparations for a housing accelerator fund for CMHC as grants are tied up in initiatives around community planning and development. Letter sent to proponent of the municipal plan amendment at 110 Malpleasant Road informing him of the council's decision. One variance request for 239 McCarthy's Point to build and attach garage onto an existing dwelling on a pre-existing undersized lot was approved and subject to conditions that were set at the PRAC meeting. Development update, there was 33 building demolition permits issued, and that's both building and demolition for 2023. Value was just under $4 million. And one sign permit issued, one plan amendment rezoning rejection to date, one temporary permit issued to date, six variants issued, nine development permits issued with construction value of $285,000, 10 tentative subdivision applications approved, 20 zoning confirmation letters issued to date, one exempt document approved to be registered with Land Registry Office, and 13 new, net new dwellings added to year-to-date. Just enforcement, coordinating dangerous unsightly premise bylaw officer with CAO, as I mentioned earlier, and one enforcement file under Community Planning Act has been resolved. And that report was submitted by Alex Henderson.
Great. Question or comment on that, Councillor Hat?
Go back to, do we get minutes for the PRAC meetings?
No, no, we don't.
We've always had them in previous council years. So I was curious if that is something that we can get for council to be up to date, because we have no idea what was.
Yep.
And the other thing is, is if we could give some, I don't want to use the word criticism, but I'd like to see a little bit more detailed on development. Planning has a lot of detail in it. Development has very little to no detail in any of the points.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We'll move on to the fire report, and I'll call on Councillor Thompson tonight.
For the month of July, or sorry, for the month of June, Eastern Charlotte Fire Rescue responded to 33 total calls. Eleven of these were mutual aid calls, and hopefully by the end of the week, we will have our structure set. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Question or comment on that? If not, we move on to the next public works report, and I'll call on Councillor McCrory.
For Black's Harbor, they're doing the regular water checks and wastewater. There's still maintenance going on at the arena. General maintenance on the ball field, mowing the parks and playgrounds, and maintaining ditches with the boom flail mower. And there's some tree removal at several locations. And they're doing general repairs on a bunch of equipment that needs odds and ends done to them to keep them running. St. George is, final modifications at the Dade Venture boat docks were finalized and set in the water. Splash pad was officially turned on, and by the looks of it, it's been getting good use. Mowing and garbage collection are routine jobs occupying most of the hours of the crew. They're doing general maintenance on vehicles and equipment as well. Final touches have been done to the canteen building at the canal. The outside recreations have all been fixed up, and the volleyball net installed for the summer. Tennis court nets were also installed. New community garden beds were set in place, and they're all filled. Couple of manholes were lowered on the Teet Road as they were too high, and the plows were running into them, damaging more, damaged the plows as well as the manhole. We had safety first put on some training courses. They covered trenching, evacuation, excavating, and confined spaces and fall arrest. And chainsaw safety is one that they're going to be doing in the future. Lift station pump was returned to Xylem as it was the wrong one sent, and it took a while, but they sorted it all out, and it's been resolved. They had blockage on Main Street. They required a vacuum truck to flush the sewer main, and that's about it.
Thank you, Councillor McCrory. Question or comment on that? Or was it Councillor Dederaacus?
It's just a comment. I just want to say, like as a representative for War III for most of St. George, I just want to say how much I enjoy reading Wrong Group's report. It's really thorough. Obviously, I don't work in the Public Works Department, but it gives me a good understanding of what is actually going on in our community.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we move on. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Councillor Hat.
Okay, we move on to committee reports, and I, Councillor Hat, you have a committee report tonight?
Yes.
Can you hear now?
I'll speak up.
Okay. Can you hear me?
So, as you can see out here in the parking lot, Playtech is here starting the maintenance on the basketball, outside basketball court. After that is done, they're moving to the pickleball court up on, by the school. And as Jason mentioned earlier, there's still ballfield work going on in here and trying to battle drainage, and also complete, you know, two months of rain with a ballfield sucks too. So, you know, that's pretty much it, and arena still chugging away and getting ready for the big retrofit of the operation system that runs the coolant plant, so.
Did you want to speak about Summerfest?
I can now, or I can wait till the councillors' part at the end, whatever you think.
I think we should do it right now.
Okay.
Because it gets the announcement. Some people fall asleep during our meeting and then won't get to the end, so maybe we'll do it right now. I know we have an announcement, you have an announcement to make, so.
Perfect. So tomorrow evening kicks off Summerfest here in Eastern Charlotte. We have a fun, filled time planned for something for everybody. Bouncy houses, castles, whatever you like to call them, music, food, gatherings, presentations, largest fireworks show in Atlantic Canada sponsored by Cook's Aqua. A full schedule of events can be found on the easterncharlotte.ca website, or the easiest place is to go to the Facebook page, Eastern Charlotte Parks and Recreation, or pick up a brochure. There's a bunch out on the table, and there's a bunch here if anybody needs any. And they'll also be distributed through the local businesses here. I'd also like to put an extended huge thank out to some of the sponsors. Cook's Aquaculture, Futurnets, Connors Brothers, CBCL, Brunswick Credit Union, Boyd Brothers Home Hardware, Subway, Tim Hortons, Vance's Auto Supplies, CareQuest, LeBlanc's Independent Grocers, Key Spill and Supplies, McLean Sales, St. John Labs, St. George Dental Clinic, and let's not forget Eastern Charlotte Fire and Rescue with the road closures and the fireworks. They probably have the most dangerous job of the whole weekend, so. I would also like to note there will be two temporary road closures in St. George. Saturday, July 22nd, from 8:00 AM to 12:30 PM, portion of Latit Road, Route 770, the intersection from Main Street to Carlton Street, the event Soapbox Derby that's going on. So for the kids to go down over the hill, so that road will be closed off. You'll see barricades there. And then on Riverview Avenue, I guess is also Route 770, from the intersection of Main Street to Riverview, northbound to Adventure Lane, and that will be the Little People's Parade that's going on there early that morning. So, and I believe that's 8:55 to 9:30, the time is slated for that. The other thing is, is if anybody's looked at the weather, Friday night is the bouncy castles in here and the community party that we have from 5:00 to 9:00. We've made a decision that if it continues the weather forecast by what it looks like to be, you know, 20-plus millimeters of rain for Friday evening, we're going to, instead of losing the opportunity to have the bouncy castles for the kids and the barbecue and the live music, we're going to try to move it to the arena in Black's Harbor if the rainstorm continues the way that's in the forecast. So there's obviously a cost when we book this a year ahead, so we don't want to lose that, and also don't want to lose the opportunity for kids to have fun either, so. Anyway, you'll see that out on our Facebook page and the website. And if you don't mind, I'd appreciate some horsepower behind this, spreading the word by word of mouth, or even spreading it through social media, that unfortunately, we're going to have a backup plan in case something, the weather does go sideways on us here, so.
Good. No, we're very fortunate to have a building in Eastern Charlotte to be able to do that, because this is all about families and children. They're having a good time this weekend, and we want to make sure that they still have a good time.
I forgot one person. I'd like to thank Jamie and Sarah Ross too for organizing the Soapbox Derby.
Oh, they're doing good. Are you in that this year, or your son?
Absolutely. We will be there with full competition.
Okay, we move on. Any other, Councillor Dederaacus?
So I'm the chair for the Health Services Committee. So myself and Councillor McKay, we attended a community health and needs assessment a few weeks ago. It was hosted by Horizon Health, and the purpose of the study is to have a collective understanding about the more pressing health needs of this area and others. So our community is going to be grouped in with Graham and Ann, Fundy Shores, and other rural areas. So that's the update for health committees.
Great. Any other, I have one for public safety, just to mention what happened on Monday. Fundy Shores Mayor Denny Cogswell and his safety committee from Fundy Shores met with our safety committee on Monday. We met and discussed our situations on policing. Between the two areas, we spend close to $4 million a year for our CMP protection. We decided to work together to explore every option, whether it be creating our own regional police force, or explore the costs of contracting another force. We decided to make some contacts with other regional forces, the Budget Police Association, as well as the province. The province eventually will have to give their blessing once we have a united plan for our region. There are some studies already completed, and we will as well go over those. Basically, we agreed to work together and hopefully eventually maybe become partners in any decisions that we make going forward. Councillor Ted or McCrory, would you take to add anything to that? Did I miss anything? Please add, no, I know you guys are there. Good. And Deputy Mayor, unfortunately, he couldn't be there, but he'll be there the next one for sure. Yeah. And that moves us to finance report. I'll go to Jason.
So yeah, financial report for the month of June submitted, and year-to-date, 2.3, sorry, my eyes are kind of, 2.3 million with expenditures and kind of slowly.
Yeah, Councillor Lee, you want to expand on that? Sorry about that.
Okay, so for the month of June, general government, we spent $65,979.28. Public Works, we spent $126,222.74. Fire Departments, we spent $38,910.35. For building inspection, solid waste, and planning for the Regional Service Commission, we paid them $41,737.72. And for recreation events, which would include the arena, $16,032.1. We also paid a principal on debt lease and capital, $67,078.8, for a total of $355,960.18 for the month of June. There are some other costs on water and wastewater for St. George and Black's Harbor, but I don't have the combined costs on those, so I'll try to get them for next month. And I do have all the year-to-date costs. I won't bore you with all those numbers, but if you want them, I have them here, okay?
Great, thank you, Councillor Lee. Question or comment on that? If not, we'll move ahead to 10. 10A is the new full-time position, which is arena and recreation foreman. I entertain a motion for that at this point. Councillor Ted.
I move that council approve the creation of a new full-time position, arena and rec foreman dedicated to supervise maintenance at the Paktik Connors Recreational Complex.
We have a motion on the floor, and I need a second or four that. Okay, Deputy Mayor, just by here there. Question or comment on the motion?
Question.
Councillor Hat.
That, that's for all rec facilities of Eastern Charlotte, though, not just the arena, so.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. That brings us to 10B, the St. George Capital Projects Fund. Councillor Dederaacus, would you like to?
I move that council approve the use of $128,000 of the $202,507 budgeted in the 2023 under the St. George Tax Unit for General Capital Fund land towards the $42,000 for paving and $86,000 for generators.
We have a motion on the floor by Councillor Dederaacus. I need a second or four that. Councillor Hat? Question or comment on the motion? And I'm going to go to Jason on this.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a few comments on this. The $202,000 comes out of the St. George Capital, comes out of the St. George Taxing Authority, so both of these projects are for, for within the old taxing authority of St., or the current taxing authority of St. George. So that would leave, that would leave some money left in the capital fund for other projects that would happen this year. And just for the generators, generators would be installed into the municipal office and McAdavick Place natural gas generators, and the Manor Road paving would complement the current gas tax paving project on the Manor Road. Extend that for the full length, basically coming off of the off-ramp to, I think it's Parks Brook, I believe, so.
Good. And the idea of having a generator, if we have a major power outage in Eastern Charlotte, this building would be well taken care of. Question or comment on that?
Question. So that generator one would be for here, for in case of emergencies, we'd be able to start moving towards this being a Class II, or Zone II? Is what it is, I think, so.
Any other questions or comments on the motion by Councillor Dederaacus? If not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And that's passed unanimously. That brings us up to correspondence. We have a letter from Bill Conley. What is council's desire to do with that tonight?
I would ask that we move that to the Recreation Committee. That way there, we can get back.
For review and recommendation? We have a motion on the floor by Councillor Hat, seconded by Councillor Ted. Question or comment on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. That brings us up to public presentation appearance. This is, please note under bylaw EC-01, Section 71, members of the public shall be entitled to address council for five minutes with no debate from council on matters of municipal jurisdiction. So we have the microphones set up here. Anybody would like to come forward? If not, we'll go to statements from members of council. I'll start that. This past month, I, along with our MLA and Andrea Mason and JDI Irving and council and staff members officially cut the ribbon on the new buildings and expansion work at Canal Beach. The summer concert series has begun, and I spoke at the first concert on July the 6th featuring Tom and Angela Mason to a full house. This place was packed. This happens every Thursday evening at the McAdavick Place here at 7:00 PM. And tomorrow night, tomorrow night, ladies and gentlemen, we'll be running out of time, so make sure you're here. Get here early. Starring Karen and Gary Sturgeon, which will be the kickoff to Summerfest 2023. I want to make sure that we thank Kara Hat for all the work she's been doing. I know it is her job, but she, there's a lot of details and stuff like that, and she does an excellent job for Eastern Charlotte. I would like to remind everybody that the YMCA has three different full weeks of summer programs happening at the arena in Black's Harbor, beginning the week after next. I'm suggesting that you register your children for at least one of those weeks, if not all three. We are fortunate to have the YMCA centralized out of the arena here in Black's Harbor. I'm going to go to the Deputy Mayor. Councillor Thompson, Councillor Hat.
I also should have mentioned earlier, I'd like to say thank you to everybody that came out to the rec expo that we had. It was, you know, dreary evening, but we had a lot of
a lot of vendors here. It's great to see all the things that are out and happening in the community that gives people a chance to get out and, you know, clear their head or walk around or, you know, get fit, I guess would be another thing. So I do have one question, though. The last council meeting we had, we had a lady that did a presentation about asking about the high school, about the zoning or whatnot, about if we were going to give a variance on that, or I didn't see that on this council docket.
Yep. So we, the variance was given on the, yeah, the noise that she could extend till, to 11:00 p.m. Yep.
Thank you. Councilor Dederaacus?
So I met with seniors of the Granite Town Seniors Club, and I just discussed with them the New Brunswick Age Friendly Community Recognition Program, and the ways to make our community more inclusive. So that includes transportation, recreation, social activities. There's eight different categories. Brenda Lee will be, Brenda Lee of, of this program will be attending this seniors team and social this Friday, yes, at, at 1:00 p.m. Sorry, excuse me, at 1:00 p.m. at the MacAdavick Place, correct? So she'll be talking about the program, and I'll be in attendance because I'm on the lookout for someone to represent Ward Three. So please come. And also, thank you Kara Hat for organizing this event.
Councilor McQuarrie. Councilor Ted?
Thank you, worship. Just had a couple items. In regards to personnel, we're still ongoing with the public works position, but as far as the arena and rec foreman, that was an internal competition, and Drew Dugan, I believe, was the successful candidate on that. And just one other point that I'd touch on, our meeting, our community watch meeting that we had Monday night, I just wanted to speak to that a little bit. It kind of, it was great to see so many people out, but the meeting, the purpose of the meeting got lost really quickly, and the meeting got derailed really quickly. The purpose of the meeting was to provide information on how to run a community watch program for our neighborhoods, and this specifically was for Ward Four, or excuse me, Ward Five and Ward Six. It certainly didn't help to have speakers stand up and state that they didn't know what the meeting was about when they were addressing the crowd. I'd say in the future, if any speakers to one of our meetings wants to stand up and address the audience, they should come to the organizers first, and we can probably educate them on what the meeting actually is about. That's all I'll have to say about that, I guess.
Thank you, Councilor Ted. Councilor Lee?
I guess in response to that, we, well, they have canceled the community watch meeting for Ward One and Ward Three for next Monday night because of what transpired out in Penfield, but it's not lost. We're still looking at some way to get this happening, whether it's doing it in smaller groups or smaller communities. I don't know, but we've got to take a different approach to it. Obviously, what we had planned isn't working. So I think there's a great, I know from, just from living up in Bonnie River and Second Falls, there's a lot of people who are very interested in it. Had a lot of response on it and a lot of questions as to why it was our meeting Alexa and I had set up for Monday night was being canceled, but it, you know, things went pretty badly, and it's no fault of any one particular person. There's just a whole bunch of things that happened in Penfield that, you know, Lisa Williams just doesn't, and I don't blame her, does not want to get caught in that situation again. So I tried to explain to people that this is a community incentive. It's not something the RCMP come to us and ask them, us to do. It's something we want to do for ourselves to make the community safer. We asked Lisa to help us out with it because she's very familiar with community watch programs, and she, she'd be great at getting us all started. But any future meetings we have in, in this, on this community watch program, we will be asking for volunteers only. We're not interested in having people arrive at our meetings and hijack them and come there to bash the RCMP. There's a lot of disgruntled people as to the way the RCMP are operating. We get that. That's not our, we can't do anything about that. The province hired them. If you want to make complaints, complain to the province, not at our meetings for community watch. We're, we're not the people that can do anything about that. So if you don't mind spreading the word, I know I've talked to, on social media a bit to people about, you know, doing something in the future, and I, and I, hopefully, we can continue with this, to help out, keep, help keep us safe. There's a lot going on, a lot that we don't like, you know, and I'm not bashing the RCMP one little bit because I think probably they are understaffed and there's a lot of things going on way up the ladder that we have no idea, you know, and no control over. So our agenda is to do something for ourselves to help out. So if you know anybody that's wanting to volunteer for these community watch programs, and they do work if, if it's done right, then please let us know. Okay? Thank you.
Councilor Lee, Councilor McKay?
I just want to thank you all for coming out tonight.
Okay, folks, and our next meeting is, is Wednesday, August the 16th, at 7:00 p.m. here at the MacAdavick Place. Before we go, I want to make sure I recognize Chris McKinnon. Chris McKinnon is actually part of our team. He makes sure, he does a lot of work for us, making sure, making sure things are set up. So I want to thank you. Maybe put the camera right on Chris. Can you put the camera on Lucas? Here we are. Can you do that? Yeah, yeah, that's you. You're the cameraman. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, right there, yeah. He's part of our team. I want to make sure everybody who works for us gets recognized because it's not, it's just not, it's not, yeah, yeah. So it's not, it's not just me. It's not just the council. We all, we all work together here as a team. So at this point, I'll look for a motion for a German. Councilor Hat, thank you very much.